Weet Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
Would the city clerk please take road? Bean Goke?
Here.
Terry Womble?
Present.
Tracy Langworthy?
Here.
Wanda Sang?
Here.
Mike Stites?
Here.
Karen Adams?
Here.
Karen Berry?
Here.
And Alina Rotola?
Here.
I thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 28, 2009?
No.
With a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Gokee. Discussion on minutes. Please poll the council. Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight. I would ask Mrs. Weetridge to please come forth to read the proclamation. We have two guests tonight to speak on the resolution. Mary Zinn and Linda Rockwell. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, citizens of Weet Ridge, good evening. Whereas conflict resolution encompasses mediation, arbitration, facilitation, collaborative decision-making, and other responses to differences; whereas the conflict resolution processes empowers individuals, families, communities, organizations, and businesses to foster communication and devise solutions that are acceptable to the needs and interests of all parties involved; and whereas conflict resolution is taught and practiced by citizens in many school systems, universities, and graduate programs throughout Colorado and the world as a way of solving disputes; whereas community-based programs fairly and equitably resolve neighborhood and community conflicts thereby strengthening local relationships; and whereas professional associations of conflict mediators promote peaceful and creative resolutions to disputes. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jerry Detulio, Mayor of the City of Weet Ridge, do hereby proclaim October 2009 Conflict Resolution Month.
Good evening and thank you so much, Mayor Detulio. We thank you and the City of Weet Ridge for proclaiming with other cities, with the state legislature, and with the governor, Colorado, October 2009 Conflict Resolution Month. And that simply means that we're all going to try to do our best to resolve conflicts in a nonviolent and positive way. And I've brought a few brochures to leave. I also want you to know that we're promoting the reading of the book The Hurt, which is about a little boy whose hurt gets so big he can't fit in his own bedrooms until he decides what he's going to do about it and takes action to resolve the problem. So I just want to say thank you and please spread the word. We are in our fifth year of Conflict Resolution Month, and we're looking forward to many more years and our citizens to do better and better and be happier and happier in our communities. Thank you.
Move on to citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please, if you are here for public comment, please step forward and state your name and say your last name for the record.
Thomas Slattery, 6869 West 32nd Avenue. I am representing Weet Ridge United Neighborhoods. Weet Ridge United Neighborhoods endorses the following candidates for the November 2009 municipal election. For mayor, incumbent Jerry Detulio. He has been communicative with the public. He has been effective and hardworking. He conducts meetings well and encourages public input. He has taken leadership for the building permit rebate program. For city council, District 4, John McMillan. He has demonstrated capacity to understand the issues and challenges facing the city. He is open-minded about the varying perspectives of city issues. He is mindful that the main role of government is to carry out the wishes of the citizenry. He is well experienced, having been a member of the planning commission and as a reporter for a local newspaper. Weet Ridge United Neighborhoods opposes ballot issues 2A and 2B. They are not deemed compatible with the character of Weet Ridge. They pose a threat to mountain views. They are not considered necessary for needed and effective development in the city. The city lacks adequate infrastructure to support massive development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait for the light.
Pardon?
Please state my name.
He's looking for his green light.
Yeah. Thomas Riff, 4315 Wadsworth Boulevard. R.I. 2P. Z. Paul. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here on behalf of Enterprise Weet Ridge. That is a citizens civic organization to try to promote businesses within the city. I'm happy to announce that Enterprise Weet Ridge will, for this holiday season, be announcing the Passport to Weet Ridge. The idea of this is a passport-looking document that members of the public, consuming public, we hope, will be taking to individual merchants throughout the City of Weet Ridge. You have to buy in Weet Ridge, have the merchant sign off on the passport. You get 10 of those little spots filled in that says you've been to 10 different merchants. You'll then be able to turn that in and you'll be eligible for a drawing. The drawing will be from prizes that are provided by Enterprise Weet Ridge, and those will be solicited also from merchants in the Weet Ridge area. So we're not asking for anything from the city, just Enterprise Weet Ridge wanted you to be aware of that. And then Enterprise Weet Ridge asked me just to indicate that the Board of Directors of Enterprise Weet Ridge has unanimously voted to support the 2009 CAC Plan. Many board members from Enterprise Weet Ridge also were on the CAC Plan Board, and they give it its wholehearted endorsement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Susie Seeds. I live at 6147 West 35th Avenue. Citizens of Weet Ridge, think before relinquishing your voting rights. Think before allowing others to make decisions affecting your future. Do you think a building could be too high at the future Cabela site? Do you think a look? Do you have a look in mind for Wadsworth? If you answered yes to these questions, please vote no on amendments 2A and 2B. These amendments only tell us where height and density restrictions may be removed, not how high nor how dense development will be. Planners, developers, consultants, council, and others should not determine our future. Citizens of Weet Ridge should retain their legal right to adjust height and density in a manner that we, as citizens, predetermine. I was a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee to revise the comprehensive plan. We work closely with consultants and citizens to find where we have common interests. Early on, it was determined that citizens liked the look of smaller buildings, while our committee said taller buildings were okay. An early draft plan of May 9th reflected possible limits on how many stories would be appropriate at the Cabela site. At some point, exact language for a height limit of five to six stories was removed. Only pictures remain. Why were citizens specifically asked to look at acceptable building height limits, had limits reflected in a draft plan, then those desired looks removed? Would it not have been appropriate for us to be voting on how high is too high, how dense is too dense? Are we truly planning for our future via these amendments? 2A and 2B ask us to give up our right to choose height limits together as a community. These amendments will allow others to create their vision for what we need. As of today, you, as a voting citizen, have an absolute say in how high any building can be in Weet Ridge. There were reasons past citizens chose to be an integral part of this dialogue. Keep your options open. Until our council is transparent about how high and how dense they are planning to go, we must keep our voting rights on these land parcels intact. Please vote no on amendments 2A and 2B. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on our public comment? Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight before we move on? Item one is the consent agenda. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda. A. Motion to approve the annual police radio system contract payment to the West Metro Fire Protection District in the amount of $87,879 from account number 01-204-700-704 for police radio system services. B. Motion to council October 19, 2009 city council study session. C. Resolution 54-2009 amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $5,450 for the Channel 8 closet cleanup and CAD drawings. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve A, B, and C.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion. Please poll the council. Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Womble voting no. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The order of testimony will be city staff, the applicant, if we have one, and then the public, followed by council discussion and questions. Please keep all comments germane to the subject. Item two is Council Bill 27-2009. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 27, 2009, and ordinance amending ordinance 1446, series 2009, concerning a time-limited rebate of a portion of the city's building permit and inspection fees for the repair of damage caused by the July 20, 2009 storm.
And open the public hearing and ask the city clerk to assign an ordinance number? Yes, Council Bill 27-2009 will be assigned, ordinance number 1456. Thank you. Do we have anything? Mr. Dahl?
Council, you have the proposed amendment in front of you. This is an ordinance amending an ordinance in one particular at the moment, which is to delete Section 1F requirement of appropriation. There was also interest in adding additional amendment, and I've created language for Councilmember Stites. I wanted to point out that that amendment would have to do with changing the outside date for the rebate program. Otherwise, it would expire on October 16. And it occurred to me that it would be necessary also to change this ordinance, the effective date portion of this ordinance. Normally, ordinances take effect 15 days after final publication. That's going to be after October 16. So I've supplied Mr. Stites with the language to change the effective date section of this ordinance to make it effective upon adoption.
Thank you. Mr. Young, do you have any other comments on staff presentation?
Again, just to reiterate with council, staff is recommending that we change the effective period of this, of the original ordinance, ordinance number 16, I'm sorry, 1446 of 2009, to reflect ending period of, or to reflect the date of October 20th, excuse me. The period of eligibility shall commence on July 21, 2009, and automatically end on, instead of October 16, 2009. We're recommending that we change that and automatically end on July 20 of 2010. This would allow those homeowners and property owners that have not been able to take advantage of the rebate program to this date and will not be able to by the October 16 date additional time. We have been getting numerous phone calls in the last week or so, asking about whether that deadline can be extended. Our understanding, at least one conversation I've had with a local contractor just today, is that even individuals that have been working on trying to get applications in immediately following the storm, so again, you know, sometime in that first week of July, after the July storm, still do not have, are not able to due to capacity issues with contractors and also dealing with insurance companies. They've just not been able to get the smittles in. So again, staff's requesting we go ahead, more of an equity issue across the board with everybody that was impacted by the storm, to extend that date. The reason we're asking to extend the date that far out with almost another, basically, a year from the original date of the storm. A lot of this work cannot be done. Roofs don't normally get done during the winter months, the colder months. Those will be the, my understanding is from some contractors, there's already work that's scheduled out into May and June of next year to start doing and finish up on some of these roofs. And therefore, again, what we'd like to do is extend that deadline in a period that will allow that to happen in an adequate time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number two tonight? Then we'll move on to council question and discussions. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting this because of the equity issue. I really did feel when this came to us that that was a pretty short timeframe. I also feel a little bit of concern, equity was one of my concerns in the beginning because of the parts of the city that was not hit and the people wanting to get roofs or needing to get work done. We're not getting the same break. How are we going to be able to tell if the work was, if the damage was, occurred because of the storm in that different persons I've spoken with in the community feel that the damage was more widespread than just particular areas that, how do we know that? I don't know that.
Well, again, if you look at the ordinance that we did go into effect, again, referring to ordinance 1446, series of 2009, there was language in there, as requested by council, that any applicant would have to attest, well, let me read it verbatim here, attesting that the purpose of the work requiring the movement was to repair damage caused by the July 20, 2009 storm. The application that we have created basically has that statement in there that anyone signing that application is stating that the work that's being done and the permit that's being pulled and now requesting rebate for that work needs to be an outcome of that storm. So that's, that's the best we could do as far as creating a document that the homeowner would have to sign that.
I guess would it be fair to ask maybe our Public Works or our Community Development Director, perhaps our Chief of Police, what swath of the city was damaged, do we know?
Well, again, you know, I certainly let them answer that, but you know, we could certainly try to set up, if council wants to go back and try to set up some boundaries, we can certainly do that. You know, there's certainly a core area of the city that was hit the hardest, but I'm not sure it's fair to ask you, the Public Works or our Police Department, to try to determine the exact impact of the storm. But we could certainly talk about that as a, as a body, I feel, if you want to go back and revisit that part of the, of the ordinance.
Thank you. Nothing else.
Mr. Womble?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Mr. Dahl, maybe you're the most appropriate one to answer this, possibly, being through it before, I'm hoping. When your insurance company comes out to inspect your roof, one of the first questions I would imagine they would ask is what caused the damage? Would that be a fair assessment?
Yes, it would.
So therefore, I think that we shouldn't set boundaries on this considering the fact that when an insurance company comes out, they're asking the homeowner, you know, what caused this damage? And I think most people from that storm period that are getting their roofs redone, that has been the general answer, which is, you know, the storm caused it, regardless up there on the west side or east side of Wadsworth.
Do we have any other comments before, Mr. Gokee?
Yes. Many times in the past, whenever members of council can benefit financially from an ordinance being passed in the city, we have to abstain from a vote supporting that, being that a lot of us are likely to receive rebates. How does that work out?
Well, to the extent this is a program which applies citywide, it's really no different, for example, than a, than a leash law or any other requirement that, that is not a specific contract. Where you're setting up a citywide program, which, which you are, unless and until you narrow it, the fact that council members may or may not choose to apply under the program doesn't, doesn't create a financial interest for you because it's not a specific contract you're voting on to move that money to you. The, the best analogy, for example, is tax ordinances. And the case law is very clear that when a council adopts a tax ordinance, property tax ordinance, you know, that's going to financially affect usually all the council members if they have an own property. And the courts are very clear that that's okay. It's a clearly a financial impact. It's kind of direct, but it's permitted because the courts recognize that you need to be able to enact legislation that's citywide in its scope without having to recuse yourselves from that action. It's a very good question, a fair one. I think it's good to make a record on that, that that's what the case law allows.
Thank you. Yeah.
Jerry?
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gokee, thank you for asking that question. That's the part of this that I'm struggling with in that my home was, in fact, damaged severely. And if we do apply for this rebate, we will be benefiting from it. And at that point in time, my comfort zone due to the areas that were not hit and the people are not able to take advantage, we will probably donate that money back into the city foundation or something that would benefit the rest of the city.
Any other questions or comments on this ordinance? Ms. Berry?
I won't be supporting this because as I've stated before, I think this treats people differently. There were people who were damaged much earlier in the season from hailstorms, and they won't be able to apply to this because it's a July 20 storm, not the ones that were earlier. Also, in my area, there were people who were damaged because of, there wasn't hail, but they were flooded out, and they don't get any, any help with it. So I think, you know, in council, looking at something like this, they need to look at how all people were impacted this summer and make sure that we treat all citizens equally, not some that were just damaged on one storm in one particular area, but what happened through the city the entire season. As some citizens came back, or came and spoke under citizens' right to speak a month ago, they're continually damaged year after year from flooding from city streets. And we've done nothing to fix that, which I think we should do. And we should help those people out who have to repair their homes year after year. And the monies that, we could be taking some of these and trying to help those citizens also. So I think we, we have to look at stuff that treats all citizens equally, and I don't think that this does it.
Any other comments before I close the public hearing? I'm going to pass the gavel here. Mr. Young, I really appreciate the fact that you brought this forward as a recommendation, and that's why we haven't agreed on some things recently, but I do agree with this, and I applaud you for bringing that forward proactively. With regard to the storm and the flooding, I would strongly urge Councilmember Berry to make a motion to bring that study forward, to actually discuss that area that's been flooded for the past few years. That area was flooded by work that the city did on the street, and I would suggest that, I'm sure council would more than support a motion to start looking at that and funding it and looking at some options to fund that and repair that. Originally, that was a $3.7 million project, but I'm assuming that based on the economy and the work that needs to be done, the city probably could get a better price at that and actually come up with some better ideas of funding that area. So I would strongly support that if you made that motion under elected officials' matters, Ms. Berry. Before I close the public hearing, do you have any more comments from city staff or the council? Close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 27, 2009, and ordinance amending ordinance number 1446, series 2009, concerning a time-limited rebate of a portion of the city's building permit and inspection fees for the repair of the damage caused by the July 20, 2009 storm, with an additional amendment as follows, replacing October 16, 2009, with July 20, 2010 in the final, whereas clause and in Section 1D. On second reading and that it take effect upon adoption as permitted by the Charter.
Second. I have a motion for approval with amendments, seconded by Councilmembers Sang and Womble. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council. Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Berry voting no. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to notify the public of the date and time of the public hearing. Amendments are allowed on first reading. Public comment is not allowed on first reading. Item three is Council Bill 29-2009. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill 28, 2009, and ordinance repealing and reacting certain sections of Chapter 5 of the Code of Laws of the City of Weet Ridge concerning the Building Code, the Mechanical Code, the Plumbing Code, the Property Maintenance Code, the Energy Conversation Code, the Residential Code, the Fire Code, the Fuel Gas Code, and penalties for violations of the same and adopting by reference to 2006 International Codes.
Motion's in order.
If I can find it here. I move to approve Council Bill Number 28, 2009, and ordinance repealing and reacting, reenacting certain sections of Chapter 5 of the Code of Laws with the City of Weet Ridge and adopting by reference to 2006 International Codes and with the change of the base fee of $23.50 on annual inspection. of $23.50 on annual inspection revenue reduction. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, October 26, 2009, at 7:00 p.m. in City Hall, Council Chambers, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval with an amendment to the lowest fees, as recommended in the packet, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Mr. Goke?
Yes, I started to go over this document, having a construction background, and I came down with the crud, so I wasn't able to put my best effort forward to, uh, check this out and, and see what has to be done. I, I did generally see that apparently we're going to be taxing maintenance on houses. We're going to put fees on repairs on houses. I mean, if you want to do, put a stool in or whatever, those are some of the things that you could have to get a permit to do. And, uh, Mr. Johnstone did call me this afternoon. I, I just wasn't able to have a conversation with him, because of my condition. I'm more than welcome to have a conversation with him later on in the week to discuss this, but I do see some major pitfalls in this Building Code revision here. Same thing happened last time we adopted the IBC. We found out only too late that there were some real detrimental changes that impacted our senior citizens and other citizens in the community. So, I just wanted everyone to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council for first reading? As I stated earlier, it's a motion for approval with a base permit fee of $23.50, which was the lowest amount, as indicated by city staff. So, please pull the council on the motion.
Motion carries five to three, with Councilmembers Berry, Adams, and Wambel voting no.
Thank you. Council Bill 30-2009, item four, Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 29-2009, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 5 and 21 of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge concerning the licensing of, of contractors. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 29-2009, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 5 and 21 of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge concerning the licensing of contractors on first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, October 26, 2009, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Hall, Council Chambers, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven to one, with Councilmember Goke voting no.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is... Item five, Council Bill, Council Bill 30, Councilmember Sang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill 30-2009, an ordinance amending, excuse me, is Section 11-183 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to require pawn brokers to submit electronic records and digital photographs of property and persons who complete pawn, pawn transactions in the city. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 30-2009, amending Section 11-183 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws requiring pawn brokers to submit electronic records and digital photographs of property and persons who complete transactions on first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, October 26, 2009, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven to one, with Councilmember Wambel voting no.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item six is Resolution 53-2009, Councilmember Sang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 53-2009, a resolution repealing and reenacting the city budget and appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amount specified for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for the 2010 budget year. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to, to direct the city manager to identify public work projects and their funding source, up to $1 million for the 2010 budget, and I further move to postpone the budget approval until October the 26th.
Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a motion to direct the city manager to look at $1 million, up to $1 million in public works projects, and postpone the approval to October 26th. Seconded by Councilmember Goke. Discussion on the main motion or amendments?
I'd like to amend the motion as read, to also include looking at taking away the car allowances for the, uh, all staff that has the car allowance as well.
Is there a second for that motion? Is there a second to remove car allowances for staff? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. So, we're back to the main motion by Councilmember Sang to postpone and to look at public works projects up to $1 million. Discussion on that motion? Councilmember Berry?
Um, Mr. Goff, legally, we have to have the budget approved by December 31st?
December 15th.
Fifteenth. Um, and I, I think we've had, and we've already canceled several meetings in November, so I'm just wondering how we would get, we're going to have some new council members. Could anyone tell me how many council meetings we would have after we have a new council and December 15th?
I believe the motion was to, to move it to October 26th.
October, well, okay.
Which is our next meeting for this current council.
Thank you, I didn't quite hear that. Okay, sorry. I thought you said November. I apologize then.
Mr. Wambel?
I'd like to amend the motion as read again, to also include looking at decreasing the city manager's salary by 20%.
Is there a second? Is there a second to decrease the city manager's salary by 20%? Is there a second? Motion fails by lack of a second. So, we're back to the main motion, as read by Councilmember Sang, to postpone to October 20, uh, 26th, and to look at $1 million, up to $1 million in public works projects. Councilmember Adams.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was unaware that this was going to come forward, which is fine, that we would postpone the budget till the 26th. Do we have a study session in between now and then? We don't have a study session to discuss the budget, so it would be discussed on the dais as far as...
We just canceled it.
Yeah, we did. We just did, didn't we? Um, I guess my question is, at that point in time, the motion read that we would do what with the CIP budget?
Councilmember Sang, would you please read your motion again? It seems like we have some audio difficulties tonight.
I move to direct the city manager to identify public works projects and their funding source, up to $1 million for the 2010 budget, and I further move to postpone budget approval until October the 26th.
That's the motion that's on the floor right now. Now, Councilmember Berry?
I would, um, Mrs. Sang, do you have any suggestions about where that $1 million is going to come from? Whether it's going to be taken out of any direction to staff on whether they should take it out of the existing budget or out of, out of our reserve fund?
Well, I'm under the understanding that we have, how much is it on 38th? How much money do we have for 38th Avenue?
32nd Avenue.
I mean, 32nd Avenue, I'm sorry.
Currently, in the CIP budget, we have a line item for about $3.25 million, I believe, that's allocated for our match on the 32nd and Youngfield-Cabellos project.
But that isn't something that is going to happen right away, is it?
Well, I hope so. But, no, I don't, we do not have current timeline for that, that project to be constructed.
So, that's a suggestion there.
I guess, um, you know, I would be pretty hesitant. We'll put, set that money aside in case that project does come in, and that we're, you know, since it would be such a, a revenue generator for the city and really change that area, I hate to start spending that set aside now, if that project does come in, if they're able to get some additional financing or another tenant, and they're able to make that project work, and we've spent that money, then our only option would be taking it out of the reserve, and with projections, we're going to be out of the reserve here pretty, you know, in the next few years anyway. So, I would be hesitant about taking, spending that, that money, which is the money we committed to, to completing that intersection, which is critical for the Cabellos project.
There's also been discussion about that our reserve fund is too high right now anyway, so if it comes in, that's a place that you could look at it for, out of the reserve, that will bring it down to maybe a more compatible number for reserve.
Mr. Goff, could you, um, you know, I know we've, we've had some projections at current expenditures and projected revenues, when we're going to be down to the state minimum in the reserve?
We're projecting a reserve for 2010 of about 27% of expenditures, which is about $6.5 million. Unfortunately, in Wheat Ridge, we have a history of using our fund balance on an annual basis to balance the budget, unless we make significant reductions in expenditures. So, if, that reserve is important to have until we know what's going to happen with the economy here in the next few years, because we may be dipping into that fund balance for normal operating expenditures in the next few years.
Thank you.
Also, Ms. Berry, if, if Cabellos does come in sooner, and hopefully, we all hope for that, that it does come in sooner than later, but then the first year, we could have that money back to put back into the reserve.
Well, the projections originally from that, I don't think was we would have $3.5 million of revenues from Cabellos in the first year, when we first looked at that.
I'm just saying a million. I'm not saying $3.5 million.
Yeah. The honest thing is, if you want to do this, then I think we ought to give them some suggestions of where to take it out, out of the existing budget, because I don't want to take it out of the reserves. I don't want to spend the set aside for the critical project of Cabellos. Um, you know, one suggestion would be that, that currently, we used to have more parks' maintenance employees paid out of the open space fund. We had seven, now we only have five. If we moved more of the park maintenance employees to the open space fund, that may free up some money, but then that would mean probably postponing some of the, some of the parks' construction projects. But I, I think we ought to give them some direction about where you want to come up with this $1 million.
Yeah, you gave a suggestion, and I gave a suggestion, and I think that they're smart enough that they can look over the budget and see what would be feasible.
I, like, maybe some direction about it isn't to come out of the reserve or out of the Cabellos.
Well, that's not, that's not what the motion, the motion is, can you read it again, Mrs. Sang? Is for staff to make some recommendations to council. There's nothing in there about not doing this or not doing that. So, I think they're paid professionals, and they can make recommendations on this to council on the 26th or sooner.
Well...
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to make an amendment, then, to give staff direction.
Maybe he's got his hand up.
Well, she asked, "What's the worst to make an amendment?" Feel free.
Um, that, um, they come up with some alternatives that don't take money out of the reserves or out of the set aside for the 32nd and Youngfield project.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to not take out any dollars from the reserve of the Cabellos CIP allocation. Discussion on that motion? Please pull the council. That's an amendment. Oh, Mr. Goke?
Given the unique situation, since it's changed since we put Cabellos in an urban renewal district, our toolbox is a little heftier than it was before. We can bond to cover gaps of, uh, cover those type of gaps. We can partner with the Long Peak Metro District to, uh, cover those gaps and get the project done. Uh, so I think there's, uh, substantial, uh, differences that, uh, when this was first perceived, that are different today, and I think we can, uh, rest assured, everyone wants Cabellos, we'll do whatever it takes to get Cabellos, and if that means we go out and we have to bond to cover that, that $1 million to cover that, we can do that. Our Urban Renewal Board can do that. And we can work out other agreements with the Long Peaks Metro District to accommodate, uh, to accommodate this. Those are just, those are not all the solutions, those are not all the answers, those are just some of the things that we could do to move this thing forward.
Do we have an amendment to direct staff not to use the reserve and not to use the Cabellos CIP money? Any more comments on the motion, or the amendment? Please pull the council.
Clear the board.
Clear the board, please, Mr. Snow.
Okay.
Motion ties four to four, with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, Adams, and Langworthy voting yes, Councilmembers Stites, Sang, Wambel, and Goke voting no.
I'll be voting no on that for the simple fact that staff needs the opportunity and the ability to be creative and look at all options, so I'm voting no on the amendment. It's not a budget amendment, it's a direction to staff. We've, I've talked to the city attorney about this. It's a budget, it's a direction to staff by Mr. Dahl.
You're not adopting or amending the budget tonight, in the language of the charter. In constraining the mayor's tie-breaking ability requires the mayor to break all ties except on, quote, "adoption or amendment of the budget." Tonight, you're giving directions about how the budget will be brought forward to you and when, but that is neither an adoption nor an amendment of the budget, and then the mayor is required to break a tie.
Thank you.
Obviously, there was some discussion about this outside of a study session or a public hearing. I just wish that, um, people would feel compelled to share those other things in advance than continued behind-the-scenes discussion about something which is the most important critical element of what we do, which is the budget, so...
Well, actually, my comments about breaking a tie, I made at the last city council meeting in the public. I mentioned any direction to the city attorney, I could, or to the city manager, I could vote on. I couldn't vote on a resolution adopting or amending the budget, and I also discussed the concerns I had about the Public Works Department and their lack of funding in 2010. So, that was discussed at the last meeting. Okay, we have a motion that passed, we're moving on to item...
No, the motion hasn't passed.
Oh, the amendment failed, so now we're on to any other amendments? Hey, please...
The original amendment.
I'd like to speak to the original.
Ms. Adams?
Okay, so the amendment has failed, correct?
Correct.
And we're speaking to the main motion, correct?
Main motion, right.
Thank you. Um, this evening, I felt it appropriate, um, our legislative budget for, um, meetings and items that our council uses. It's our council budget, our treasurer and our clerk budget, and also our legislative budget that we bring forward. And it was around $300 and some thousand dollars for legislative purposes, for meeting, education, outreach. I had come forward and wanted to bring that to cut down the budget by $45,100. I brought that forward per Mr. Stites' request to come as soon as I could with it. I worked on it last week, and then I finished it up today, after speaking with our administrative assistant that works for the mayor and also for the council. And I was able to come up with $45,100, and I wanted to get that to council as fast as I could, and I emailed it late today, but couldn't find everyone, but I was able to find Mr. Stites and Mrs. Sang and the mayor at around 6:15 tonight, shut, uh, door shut in the office, and was able to give this to them, in order to give them a little heads up with the $45,100 cut in the legislative budget. So, um, I wanted to let the community know that there is some money... So I wanted to let the community know that there is some money in the legislative budget that we will be looking at to make cuts and also the fact that I know it's a small amount compared to the 32nd and Youngfield project. But on the 32nd and Youngfield project, being a citizen of District Three and having a lot of questions about that particular corner, it concerns me for our slogan of being ready for business and also balancing the budget and having a budget reserve where we're comfortable and not allowing Cabela's or whomever after those businesses were shut down and having my neighbors and Mike's neighbors in District Three look at that corner. We have to be ready for that and I don't want to have to come back to the, to the council and ask them quickly to go into reserve. I think if our Economic Development Department or Wheat Ridge 2020, our city manager is able to cut some sort of a deal with a relationship with Cabela's, the county, whomever, the Metro District, we ought to be ready and we have to have that money available for that. So saying that, I will not be supporting the main motion.
You said in your first.
Hold on, I'll get your mic, please.
You said in your first comment that there was $300 and some thousand dollars in our legislative budget. Oh, I'm sorry. So I misspoke on that, but I do have $45,000 that I can take out. And I think the legislative budget, $300,325.
$300,000 total in the legislative.
Total in the legislative service budget, correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that's pretty hefty. And I was able to find $45,100 and I did pass that out tonight as soon as I could when we were going to discuss, when I felt we were going to discuss the budget this evening. Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Excuse me. Concerns me greatly with the state that Wheat Ridge is in, that we only have, what is it, $300,000, $10,000 put into the, the street budget. I don't think that's enough. I think we have to keep up with it. If we, if we let that thing slack and we have, we're going to have a lot of problems and we need to somehow, some way come up with the money. Now, 32nd and I-70, we have turned that in. When Colorado got that $180 million in highway stimulus money, was supposed to have been for shovel-ready projects because they wanted to see the money spent now. Well, 32nd and I-70 has been planned. It was bid out once and then Cabela's decided to pull back and wait a year on the economy. So it's still there and every chance we get, we keep turning that in to anybody that we can. And I think it's a shame that we've been overlooked on it. I think that there's other projects going on in this state, might be worthwhile, I don't know. But this one is a worthwhile project. It's been promised to us for 40 years. When they put I-70 in 40 years ago, they knew they blew it, but oh, we'll be back and fix that. Well, that was 40 years ago and it's taken this project to get off-center. And I, and I'm angry too at the same time is because it should be a federal or a CDOT project and not a Cabela project. But they've hooked the cost with it, two Cabela's and that being that. So we're trying everything that we can to get on some type of program and hopefully, if the Congress comes out with another stimulus package, we can get it on there. But it keeps moving up the list in different areas and particular things like that. So that concerns me greatly out there too. But it really, really concerns me that we only have in the budget $300,000 to spend on the projects in the city. That is not enough. And the only thing that we're asking is for staff to go back in, try to find some projects, try to find some funding for those projects and we'll see what we, what can be worked out. There's nothing etched in stone. We're just asking them to do it.
Any other comments, council? Ms. Seng, just for the record, would you read that motion again so everybody knows what we're voting on? Please.
I move to direct the city manager to identify public works projects and their funding source up to $1 million for the 2010 budget. And I further move to postpone the budget approval until October the 26th.
Please pull the council on the motion.
Motion carries five to three with council members Rotola, Berry, and Adams voting no.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 52-2009. Council member Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 52-2009, a resolution to approve Envision Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan Update.
Okay, give me one minute here to get the, the presentation set up. Okay, I'm Sally Payne with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, here to present the Envision Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan Update. We kicked off this process last fall, so we've been working on it for almost a year now and are excited to have the plan here to present tonight. Ben Herman with Clarion and Associates is here also to do part of the presentation as well. In terms of the presentation, we're going to do a little process recap, overview of the plan, talk about some of the proposed changes and additions, and then also the Planning Commission recommendations. In terms of the recap, the project had a dedicated website. We had ongoing information, meeting materials, surveys and polls that people could take part in on that website. We had regular information and really every, every connections and really over the last year regarding the project and also announced meetings on Channel Eight and other information on Channel Eight as well. The mayor appointed a 20-member Citizens Advisory Committee that met several times to help provide guidance and direction on the plan. And in addition, we had a technical advisory group that was made up of staff and outside agencies to help direct the work. In terms of community events, we had five community meetings that were open to the public and also had a booth at the Carnation Festival where people could stop by and get information. And finally, attended meetings of various community and business groups. There have been four city council and planning commission study sessions held. At the July 20th meeting, there was a consensus motion by council to support the plans and objectives of the, of the Envision Wheat Ridge document and we proceeded on with, with that direction. At the last meeting on September 21st, there were a few comments from council and planning commission that resulted in some minor recommendations and changes to the plan, which was included in your packet, a memo that was dated September 23rd. In terms of the plan itself, we start with a community vision and the purpose of this is really in kind of a snapshot to lay out the vision that the city has for the next 10 to 20 years. And I won't read it, but basically the, the focus of it is on really building on the city's major assets of the established neighborhoods, location, and the great views that we have to have a strong and resilient economy, to preserve our established neighborhoods, and also to have a well-connected and balanced multi, multimodal transportation system where people have a variety of different ways to, to move around town. The vision, you could, really can be broken down into six key values and these values then form really the elements or the chapters of the plan themselves. And those are a resilient economy with balanced, with a balanced mix of land uses, vibrant neighborhoods with a variety of housing options for the community, a unique community character and quality design in our development, a well-connected transportation system, again with, with various options for people to get around, quality amenities and services for the community, and also a focus on a sustainable future and that we're keeping, keeping that sustainable and future in mind as we're making our decisions. One of the key components of the plan is the structure plan. And this is essentially the, the future land use map for the plan and it is not a parcel specific map, as you can see. We really want it to be a little higher level strategic land use plan that would provide a little more flexibility and interpretation, but we do have text that accompanies the document that talks very specifically about the different locations, different, you know, categories on the plan and, you know, then does, you know, presents specific locations for where we'd like to see those types of land uses. It also targets specific locations for redevelopment and that's primarily along the corridors of Kipling and Wadsworth and then in addition, in our activity centers. And finally, it talks about neighborhoods and basically lays out some different categories for identifying our neighborhood areas. The, each chapter of the plan, as I mentioned before, contains goals and policies and those goals and policies have been built on the key themes and trends that, that we've heard throughout the planning process and have really also incorporated discussions about strategies that would support the, the action plan and the implementation of the document. And then also importantly, to, to link those goals and policies back to that vision that I mentioned and also to the, the structure plan map. And the chapter topics, this is chapters four through nine of the document, are economy and land use, neighborhoods and housing, community character and design, transportation, and we have a fairly extensive transportation chapter. We have a map included in that chapter that highlights some specific improvements around the city that we'd like to see to the transportation system. Also a chapter on community services and again, on the sustainable future. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ben Herman with Clarion and Associates to discuss the implementation portion.
Thank you. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record and your city or your address.
Yes, Ben Herman, H-E-R-M-A-N, Clarion Associates, 401 Mason Court, Fort Collins. Good evening, mayor and council members. Always nice to be back. So as, as Sally mentioned, we, the plan is broad. It covers everything from really, a balance on three areas, focus on neighborhoods, on economic development, and on transportation and supporting systems. But one of the key aspects as we went through the planning process was a focus on action. And knowing that times are challenging, nevertheless, this plan is for the next two to 20 years. So it's really meant to set a clear course for what we need to do. What you need to do as elected officials and what the citizens and business people need to do to move Wheat Ridge forward. So some of what we heard as we went through the process, again, was a balance between economic activity, revitalization, and lifting the bar in design, but also to focus on neighborhoods to capitalize on the natural values. We heard a lot from neighbors about tree canopy and the importance of that to the character of the city. So we ended up with some very specific implementation strategies in these five key areas. They correspond generally to the chapters. I'll go through them briefly because there are some specific recommendations that we wanted to highlight for you tonight. First is an emphasis on some targeted development areas and these are not necessarily in order of priority, but these are, these five areas, if you will, were identified as the ones that were most vital to the city's economic future. And you were discussing some of them earlier tonight. In order to accomplish development and redevelopment in some of those areas, there are some adjustments that are recommended to your zoning, primarily to keep the city's regulations up to date to enable you to adapt to market opportunities, particularly as fast tracks and mixed use, other mixed use developments come online, mixed use development opportunities come online or, or surface in the years to come. Balanced with economic development, we also heard a lot during the process about strengthening neighborhoods, keeping those that are currently strong, stable, and, and working on those that could use some help. And so the plan has some specific strategies in each of those areas. Sally mentioned transportation. What we heard from the community and what the implementation recommendations focus on is roadways, yes, but we heard a lot from citizens, particularly to serve the needs of young and aging population, to be able to get around walking safely, using a bicycle in the city safely, as well as, as a focus on roadways in the future. And finally, I mentioned some of these before, there's some recommendations to strengthen some conservation standards for trees and we heard from citizens that they'd like to see some measures in the code to allow more sustainable options, particularly in local energy solutions and so forth. Sally mentioned the, the study session both she and I attended with you and the Planning Commission on the 21st. Some of what we heard had to do with strengthening and clarifying how the neighborhood criteria addressed in the plan would work and how designations would be made. We were asked to do some revisions to the way the maps read to make them a little bit more clear, a little bit more legible. And finally, specifically, the Planning Commission asked us to designate or come up with a process for designating areas in the future as revitalization areas. Those are outlined in the memorandum to you dated the 23rd. Those were presented to the Planning Commission along with the plan on October 1st. The Planning Commis, Planning Commission recommended unanimously, by unanimous vote, to city council to adopt the plan, incorporating the changes outlined in that September 23rd memorandum. So with that, either Sally or I or anyone can certainly answer any questions now or as we go forward in the hearing.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. We'll come back for questions. Move on to public comment. Please step forward if you have any comments about the plan. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record and your city or your address. And please come for, for the podium. We could just have a line on the side of the wall here. There's no need to go up one at a time.
I'm J.J.A.Y., 4435 Carr Street in Asheen. Now, I am running for city council, but that's not really what I came to talk about. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me to be a member of the Comprehensive Planning Committee. It was really a delight. And I want to say that, first of all, as a member of that committee, that Clarion and Associates did a wonderful job of taking our suggestions and our concepts and really leading them into the plan as well as the public's. It did become a plan created by the city, not by Clarion and Associates. And the other thing I want to say is that I am personally very proud of, of all of our input and I hope that this council and the future council will really keep it off the shelf, dust it off often because it really does represent the guiding bible that we'd hoped it would be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members Kim Calamino, 4070 Dover Street, Wheat Ridge, member of Wheat Ridge 2020 and speaking to you tonight on behalf of that organization. I think there is so much to be proud of in this document and in the process and I want to commend council and staff and certainly Clarion Associates and the many citizens who participated in this process. I think certainly as we heard earlier tonight that October is Conflict Resolution Month. I think we worked through a lot of issues collectively and, and as I said, have a lot to be proud of. If I might, I would like to read to you the resolution passed by the Board of Wheat Ridge 2020 in support of your adoption of the comprehensive, Comprehensive Plan. Resolve that Wheat Ridge 2020 supports the passage and implementation of the proposed Comprehensive Plan, commends the City of Wheat Ridge elected officials, city staff, planning commission, and citizens for participating in a thorough process and creating a visionary plan inclusive, inclusive of the key principles in the neighborhood revitalization strategy. Further, this board encourages the development of specific timelines and measures of success to mark the implementation of the Comprehensive Plan. This was unanimously approved by the Board of Directors of Wheat Ridge 2020 on September I would like just further to elaborate that, that, you know, it's really well-written, comprehensive, visionary, and provides us excellent guideposts as we move forward towards a vision that I think that we all embrace as, as demonstrated through the great public process. And I strongly encourage you to move forward with the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Balkas, B-A-L-K-A-S, and I'm on the staff of Wheat Ridge 2020. Our offices are at 3798 Marshall Street in the city. I was just at a planning conference last week and they had several quotes on the wall and I guess in thinking about the. wall, and I guess in thinking about the Comprehensive Plan, this one struck me as, as being apropos. It said, "Planning is the process of envisioning your future without leaving it up to chance." And I think just during my tenure on Wheat Ridge 2020, there's been so much momentum in attempting to shape the future versus letting the future just come upon itself in a, in a random pattern. So this Comprehensive Plan is just one of many things I've seen the city do to position itself for the future. And I also see an opportunity, there's a lot in the professional literature, there's a lot happening in the real estate market, that says in a post-recession economy, inner-ring suburbs like Wheat Ridge actually may get the lion's share of redevelopment, that because of new, new ways of financing, projects are going to be smaller, they're going to go in locations that have existing markets. It's a little different than the mentality of build it on the fringe and hope they will come. They're not willing to take that risk. They're going to places where there are already, you know, residents and, and established sites and close-in locations, and so on and so forth. So I think the tide is turning so that places like Wheat Ridge, inner-ring locations with, again, the ready-made demographics and some older sites that need to be revitalized, actually can come out ahead in a post-recession economy. And the more that you can do, and you are doing, to position for that, I think that the city will, will come out a winner. So again, staff at 2020 certainly appreciated the opportunity to work on this plan with your staff, and applaud you for the effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Molly Hanson. My last name is H A N S O N. I am the Live Well Wheat Ridge Coordinator, and I reside at 502 and a half East Simpson Street in Lafayette, Colorado. I serve as a Live Well Wheat Ridge Coordinator. We are one of 25 funded communities in the state of Colorado to implement healthy eating and active living strategies to decrease adult and childhood obesity, and reduce the negative impacts of chronic disease related to obesity. Live Well Wheat Ridge partners with the City of Wheat Ridge Jefferson Center for Mental Health, Wheat Ridge 2020, private business owners, Jeffco Public Schools, CSU Extension Campus, Bicycle Wheat Ridge, and community-based organizations to implement policies and environmental and infrastructure changes to support healthy eating and active living. Live Well Wheat Ridge has provided a variety of input through the Comprehensive Planning process. We strongly urge the City Council to pass the plan tonight. This plan provides a valuable framework that supports active living by design, and smart growth approaches that will support the healthy behavior choices, and ultimately positively impact the health of our community residents for many years to come. The Institute of Medicine released a report, can I pass this? The Institute of Medicine released a report last month titled "Local Governments' Actions to Prevent Childhood Obesity." The Institute of Medicine states, "Local governments are uniquely positioned to create community infrastructure to, quote, 'encourage walking and bicycling for transportation and recreation through the built environment.'" The report goes on to suggest local governments should, quote, "promote efforts to provide fruits and vegetables in a variety of settings such as farmers' markets, farm stands, and community gardens." We congratulate the City of Wheat Ridge and the community for the inclusion of these valuable strategies in the comp plan. Through a dynamic and highly participatory process, partners, community members, and the city instilled in this plan forward-thinking principles that will serve the overall health of the community for many years to come. We hope the plan is supported tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Marriott. I'm the chairperson for the Wheat Ridge Business District. I also own Larson Ski &amp; Sport at 4715 Kipling Street. I was also a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Comprehensive Plan. I'm also here to encourage you to pass it tonight. I think it contains a lot of good stuff, most of what you've heard already. Also, the, the Wheat Ridge Business District unanimously, at our last meeting a week ago, approved or unanimously voted to support adoption of the Comprehensive Plan you have before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Abbott, 10780 West 35th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. And I was lucky enough to serve on the Envision Wheat Ridge Committee, enjoyed it very much, got a lot out of it, and I want to assure the council that I think you got a lot out of it. You had a large group of very engaged citizens. Honestly, the first couple of meetings, I was tentative. I don't know whether I would have said that. I thought, oh, oh, this is going to be one of these boilerplate deals where the consultant runs out this dog and pony show that they've taken around the country to 50 other cities. But as we got into it, it was apparent that the consultants were listening to the participants, and it was all gelling back together and coming into a comprehensive conclusion at the end. So I was very pleased at the end. I think a couple of things that I was happy about was they recognized the concept of primary jobs. I was afraid we were going to get caught up in a lot of what I call la-la about biking and walking and walkability and la-la-la-la. But in fact, they have to cover that ground, but they got down to the real nitty-gritty of you have to have people employed, people have to have jobs in order to pay taxes, and you can't condominiumize and Starbucks the entire city. And very large cities like Los Angeles, Chicago, New York have started to realize that, and it is appearing in the literature now of scaling back on this condominiumizing idea. And I think the Comprehensive Plan, as they have it constructed, reflects that. There is more to a city than just more condominiums. So I think they did a wonderful job, and I, I see that you've done some more tweaking on it in the last few weeks since our last meeting. And you probably covered the one area that I was a little concerned about, and that was to get more to the intent. What was the intent back in 2009, when the document was written? So often, that is left loose, and then people that come along after us have to do what the Board of Adjustment has to do sometimes, and try to figure out what was the intent back when this ordinance was written? So I, I think you've covered some of that now, but that's one area I think you need to pin down, especially related to the map, where it's hard line, it goes from red to orange to yellow, and is that line intended to be exactly a hard line? Or if you were to blow it up in micropixels, is it in fact allowed to waver a little bit across the street or something like that? So I think that was one area that I would get into is the intent. Be sure that people out in the future know why those lines were drawn where they were. So overall, I think it was a great exercise, and that the city got their money from their consultant, and, and we were all very pleased to serve on the committee and want to thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Taryll Williams, and as with Joyce J., I am a candidate for council, but I don't represent her or, or any other organization in this, in this meeting, representing just myself. I, I want to follow on some of Tom Abbott's words, actually. I support the plan that has been presented tonight. I think it's a, it's a fine, well-thought-out, well-developed plan. I am, I attended, as far as I know, all but one of the public meetings. I was not on the committee, so I had nothing to do with the groundwork that was laid to put the plan together in the first place. But I, as far as I know, I attended all but one of the public meetings, and I, I am very impressed by the extent to which the plan evolved over that period of time, six months or so, if I recall. The public input was very much represented in the changes that were made over time. I think, and Tom kind of touched on this just a little bit, I think that there was a little bit of a perception even at the end, that some of the, the maps were intended to be street-by-street, block-by-block, how a new bike route should be run, for example. And I'm not sure that that was really the intent, but I think, I think it might have come across that way, so I believe that there needs to be some care taken to ensure that this is explained again as being a concept, not a design. But having said that, I very much appreciated the extent to which connectivity, transportation, bike routes were included. And as a local Realtor, Tom, the la-laws are the clients. They are the, and I think what he means by that are the, frankly, the, the younger generation, the folks that are buying homes, and they do want, in many cases condos and lofts, even in a place like Wheat Ridge. They, but more importantly, what they want are, is the ability to walk to work, the ability to walk from their home to shopping, the ability to walk or bike easily to entertainment, arts, theaters, grocery stores. And I like the extent to which this plan, this is where I, I agree with Tom, I like the extent to which this plan represents that group, that market segment, without overemphasizing it and turning Wheat Ridge into something that it just isn't. It allows for, for that kind of development to take place in appropriate places, in appropriate scale, and, and doesn't force it on anyone. So overall, I think it's a great plan and, and a great result. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment before I move on to council questions and comments? Can we move on to council discussion? Ms. Berry?
Under, I think it was citizens' right to speak, someone had talked about the citizens had recommended height limitations in certain areas, and it suddenly dropped off the recommendations in the map. Could you, could you, if you know, could you address that, Sally?
If I understand, excuse me, the comment that was made is that at one point we had some very specific height and density numbers included for, I believe the example was what we're calling the Regional Commercial Center, where Cabela's is. And we just revised that to say that building, buildings could be higher in intensity, possibly five or more stories, is what we currently have included in, in the plan, is the wording. I think in an earlier document, we may have, have said six to eight, but I guess based on further discussions, we had revised it to, to, to read five or more.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from council discussion?
Make one more comment.
Ms. Berry?
I was really surprised to see and hear some of the elements, some of the sustainability elements, some of the local food supply elements, and integrating that into some of the other mixed-use areas, and to see some of the community health assessment kinds of issues in there. So in a lot of ways, it's really kind of exciting to see some of these new things in the plan, and there's seemed to be a lot of people that are really interested in these and really look forward to when they're, when they meet the road and we start looking at doing some implementation strategies. But it's really exciting to see some of these new elements in here, things that you normally don't see in a plan, which really weren't included in many of our other plans, so that's great. And I look forward to looking at land use applications that will be in conformance with the plan, which is one of the reasons why I think we really needed it. It didn't really match what our community needed, and I think this plan does in so many other ways. And it was great to see the process that was involved and all the citizens that were involved. And because a community plan is really a community vision, it's, it's, it's a consensus document or a compromise document, and I can see that throughout that, and I can see that staff and consultants and the community members worked very hard to coming up and, and meeting common ground. So, and, and that's pretty evident throughout the plan, so I just want to thank everyone who participated in it, and to staff who worked really hard on this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Just cite some motions, order?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 52, 2009, a resolution adopting the revision Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion for approval, second by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our meeting for tonight. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
I have nothing further, Your Honor. Thank you.
City attorneys' matters?
Two things. We'll postpone the city manager's evaluation to two weeks from now, and I'll be having the appropriate executive session motion. Also, I'll leave in your boxes a, a one-and-a-half-page description of the outcome in the Viacom versus City of Wheat Ridge billboard case. And we, pleased to...
Mr. Dahl?
Yeah.
I would ask the crowd to please lower your voice. We can't hear up here. It's kind of a tough room to work in, so please lower your comments, please. Mr. Dahl, go ahead. Thank you.
Just reporting that the District Court did rule in the city's favor in the most recent round of the Viacom billboard case. That decision was not appealed to the Court of Appeals, kind of a surprise, but that means that case is over, and it means that the decisions of the city, principally the decisions of the Community Development Director in denying one application and granting another one, is over, and we won't see more litigation, at least on that billboard. So I'm pleased that, to report a, a good end to that case. The judge took into particular consideration the testimony of two people, Ken Johnstone, who was there by deposition, he wasn't there in person, but he gave a really good deposition, and Travis Crane, who you might remember was a planner here, who now is in Raleigh, North Carolina, and was kind enough to come back for the trial and was a really good witness for the city, and I appreciated his making that effort for us. So good end and good result to that case, and we can, we've made some good law, too, in terms of the, the procedural rights that the city's accorded, and how the actions of the Community Development Department are entitled to deference by the courts. So I'll give you the memo, and if you've got any questions, feel free to call me.
Thank you. Move on to the city clerks' matters?
Yes, actually, I just wanted to let both the council and our community know of a decision I'm going to make just based on the passage of Council Bill 20, well, first reading passage of Council Bill 28, 2009 tonight, which is a 46-page document. And as you're aware, we're typically in the practice of publishing such ordinances in full in a newspaper of general circulation. Considering the size of that, of that ordinance, and considering the budget challenges we have facing the city this year, we do have the flexibility to publish in other manners. So instead, what we'll be doing is publishing that ordinance in title only, but we'll then provide full copies to anybody who requests that. They can request that of the city clerk's office. You may get a hard copy. We can email it to you. We can fax it to you. You may also find it on the city's website, and we'll also post those in numerous locations, including the website. So just want to let people know that, and that is basically a cost measure for us at this po, at this point.
Thank you.
Oh, and one, I'm sorry, one last thing. Forgot. Don't want to forget this one. Your ballots should be arriving this week. They are being mailed out, I'm told, on Wednesday this week, and between Wednesday and the end of the week. So just determined, of course, by how fast the post delivers, you should be seeing your ballots in the mail soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Lang, with you?
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a quick comment about, last week it was the International Walk to School Day, and I had the opportunity to walk my daughter to school, not quite as far from my house, because it's quite a distance from there, but, and there were a lot of students who did that, and our parking lots were much emptier, emptier, and the crossguard duty people had a much easier job, so if we could get more people to walk to school, that would be great, because then we wouldn't have to deal with all the congestion that's on that little side streets going into Prospect Valley.
Thank you. Councilmember Rotola?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also took part in the walk to school last Wednesday, and I walked from... And I also took part in the walk to school last Wednesday, and I walked from, well, I didn't walk completely from my house, but I went to Pennington, 35th and Holland, and walked up there. And it was really interesting. A really neat group of kids. They gave them a free breakfast if they walked to school, and also their parents. So they rode their bikes, walked to school, and it was a great turnout. So next year, if, when they do have it, I think everybody should try and participate in it. And also, don't forget, food banks are really in need of food, so give as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Yes, Ms. Berry, you suggested that I make a motion about looking at the drainage issues at the next study session. I think what I would rather do is I will write up a memo and have it signed with another council member and have it added to the agenda, and gives better direction, think about it, and gives better direction in the memo.
Sounds good. I wholeheartedly support that. Councilmember Womble?
I think this is going to be one of my last televised meetings, as I understand it, because of the cancellations that we've-
The 26th is the last.
So the 26th will be the last. I just wanted to make sure I did understand that. I also completely, utterly support the hardships that the people up in District One are having with the flood problems, and I would love to see that motion come forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion that I would like to make. In the interest of better customer service, I move to direct the city manager to dispose of the building department policy requiring property owners to have a ladder on-site before a roof inspection is made. And I further move to direct the city manager to require all roof inspectors to carry a ladder, which allows the inspector access to at least a single-story structure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and it was seconded by Councilmember Womble. Discussion on the main motion. Ms. Adams?
I'm probably as tired of talking about it as I am having the inconvenience of my house being still not back in order. This information came forward about this ladder discussion via email, and so I spoke with people in our neighborhood, and there are a lot of roofers in our neighborhood, all of which I spoke with, informed me that this is common practice in Lakewood and also in Aurora. I did not go any further with it because I really didn't feel like going up and down the street and talking to everyone, but I was reassured that our policy on ladders for roof replacement is in alignment, and the roofers that I spoke with did not feel upset by it. They did share one story, that there was a ladder in Lakewood that had to be left by the contractor for 14 days. At that time, I also was complimented very much on our building department, the inspection, the process, and the procedures that were following, and also the courtesy of our department. So I will not be supporting this at all.
Ms. Berry?
As I recall, in the last budget, we hired an inspector, but we didn't have, we didn't give him a truck. And I just wonder, I mean, do we have inspectors going out in sedans? I just wonder what the physical impact of something like this would be, and especially since we have just so many permits that we normally wouldn't have, how, you know, what kind of consequences this would cause.
Well, we can certainly provide you with that information. I don't have all of that information at hand right now, but we may need to come back and ask for some additional resources, and certainly would encourage the opportunity to discuss this in a more open forum with council, to talk about the impacts and the resource implications of making such a policy change.
You know, I would rather that if we were to discuss this, we'd discuss it at a study session. From my understanding, it was based upon one complaint from one email, and I think without looking at this comprehensively here, we may be incurring additional expenses we can't afford. We may be doing something that really isn't necessary, and that maybe we ought to look at it very logically, rather than have a knee-jerk reaction.
Any other comments? Ms. Rotola?
With, I know Ms. Berry said there was only one complaint. Is that correct? There was only one complaint about this?
We've heard a couple. I've talked to a contractor myself about this issue, and certainly once explained to him, understood that. And my understanding is there is many jurisdictions throughout the metro area that also have the same policy, so we're certainly not unique with that policy.
I know I've talked to several people that have had their inspections, and the ladder was available from the contractor, and I thought that was just a general practice. So I agree with Ms. Berry. I think we need to look into it further before we do something that might cause us some regret later on.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we bring the issue of ladders to a study session, certainly not immediately. We have so much on our plate with so few meetings and new council coming in. So I would like to make a substitute motion that we take this issue to a study session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion, a substitute motion, to move this discussion to a study session, seconded by Councilmember Rotola? Discussion? Please poll the council on the substitute motion.
Motion carries five to three with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, Adams, and Langworthy voting yes. Councilmembers Stites, Sang, Womble, and Goki voting no.
Ms. Sang, does your motion talk about the contractor supplying the ladders or the property owners, which is a different animal?
Property owners.
Well, the contractors, by this motion, still would supply a ladder. We're talking about property owners who don't have ladders, who are either senior or elderly or disabled that don't have a ladder, and their contractor's already left the site for a final inspection, based on some of the comments that I've heard from people who've called me about it. So I'm going to vote no on the substitute motion. Okay, we have a main motion. Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries five to three with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, and Adams voting no.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Sang? Mr. Goki?
Nothing.
Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I'd like to get personal for just a minute, if I could. You know, every time we have a meeting, I ask you to please try to do a positive thing in your community for your neighbors and stuff. And I'm angry. I'm absolutely angry, and I don't know if the rest of you will be angry, I don't know. But here we went through that hailstorm July 20th, of which I'm very thankful that we have passed the rebates for those people, and myself included. And just the other day, I got notified by State Farm that my insurance was canceled, or will be canceled. I'm extremely upset. I filed a complaint with the Colorado Insurance Commission, of which I got a nice, very nice letter back from the lady stating that they had every right to cancel me, and that she had been notified by State Farm that they're going through their books and their annual stuff now, and there'll be a bunch more probably canceled. And that just infuriates me with the way things are, and it was a catastrophe. So what I'm asking, you don't have to contact me, but please contact the Colorado Insurance Commission, because maybe, maybe if they get enough letters from people, they'll take a look at what's going on out there. I just think it's appalling. It's going to cost me a lot of money, being canceled, number one, trying to get insurance. They will cover the loss on my home, but now I got to hurry up. I was in no hurry, but now I got to hurry up, because my last day with State Farm is November 24th. So may I suggest you're watching, watch your insurance companies. If you get a cancellation, please file a complaint with Colorado Insurance Commission. They probably will have every right, but maybe if they get enough people to contact them, maybe they'll possibly redo their policies or take a look at some of these insurance companies with the way that they're doing business. Again, I will ask you to do a positive thing in your community, especially with the holidays coming up. Food might be short, so check with your neighbors, see if they need anything. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rotola?
I'm sorry. I forgot to say that Thursday, October 15th, is an after-hours gathering at Larson's Ski and Ski &amp; Shop on Kipling Street. So please attend. It's from 4:30 to 6:30. So if you get a chance, come in. There's going to be refreshments, and maybe some door prizes from Larson's, other than lip balm.
Ms. Berry? Oh, Ms. Adams, sorry.
Now I lost my thought. I guess I would like also, as staff will be looking at budget, that they look at the Budget Oversight Committee's work and the work that they did, and the recommendations that they made when they're moving forward. I do have that. I had that. I brought it in my budget book, and I'm not seeing it, but there is a final document from the citizens' Budget Oversight Committee, so I'd like for them to kind of put that in the mix while they're looking at budget. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. Wanted to thank Mr. Goki for coming tonight. I know you've been sick, and it looks like you're really trying to protect yourself, so thanks for coming tonight under duress. Number two, I wanted to mention, right after the July 20th storm, I had contacted the county about some extra dollars through Jefferson County Open Space for tree replacement on public property, and Randy had acted on that with Joyce. We got a memo back today from Ralph Schell indicating that the city would be eligible possibly for funding for replacement of trees that were damaged in the storm on public property. Is that true? Is there any update on that?
Right, on public property, yes. Actually, I did hear that they're taking that into consideration today, so.
So I wanted to thank the commissioners and Ralph Schell for acknowledging the city of Wheat Ridge and our concern about maintaining our parks and public right-of-ways for trees. And then third, I wanted to congratulate Sandalwood Manor. We had a re-ground opening on Saturday. It was a great day. They really expanded their property. It's, Sandalwood Manor addresses folks who have had surgery. It's a short-term stay center for those seniors and anybody who's had a short-term orthopedic type of surgery. I wanted to thank Mark and Angela and Richard for their, they're the primaries who had the re-ground opening, and they're also going to apply for a Wheat Ridge Business District grant on their sign of facade improvements. So that's a good thing. So Britta Fisher actually got the information and the application. So I wanted to congratulate Sandalwood as one more investment in the community on 38th Avenue, all the work they did, and thank staff for their work on the building department, because it was a major expansion and a major redo of that building. So with that, we're adjourned.